Thank you. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Wong.
Here.
Councilmember Shepard Rami.
Here.
Councilmember Udi.
Here.
Vice Mayor Talt.
Yep.
Mayor Jacobowski.
Here. Thank you. The agenda is posted 72 hours prior to each regular meeting at the following locations: City Hall, the Prow Public Library, and the Stoneman Building. The agenda is also posted on the city's website. The city welcomes public input at this time, and items, I'm sorry, that are not on the agenda. Pursuant to state law, the city council may not discuss or take action on issues not on the meeting agenda. Please note that comments are limited to two minutes and will be timed by city staff. At this point, I'd like to ask City Clerk Baker to explain how public comment will work.
Thank you, Mayor. For each item on the agenda, there'll be time for public comment. We'll accept comments in three ways. First, we will take in-person comments for each item. Please fill out a speaker card and turn it into me if you wish to speak on an item. There's a countdown timer to the left of the public microphone to help speakers keep track of the remaining time to speak. We will then ask for comments from our Zoom participants. When we ask for public comments via Zoom, there are two ways you can let us know you would like to speak. First, you can use the raised hand feature, which is a button that's found by clicking on Participants, and then clicking on Raised Hand on the bottom right side of the screen. Please do not use this feature until we've asked for public comment, or else we may not see it or know which item you're asking to speak on. As a second option, you can send a message using the chat box saying you would like to speak on this particular agenda item. Comments will be accepted only until the end of the public comment period for that item. Finally, I will then read into the record any public comments received by email for that particular item. Due to technical limitations associated with gathering, printing, and sorting emailed public comment, the city has instituted a 3:00 PM cutoff the day before Friday city council meetings for emailed public comment. This is to ensure there's sufficient time to gather and present the emailed comments at the city council meeting. Any comments received after 3:00 PM the day before Friday city council meeting will be included in the public comment record but will not be read at the meeting. Thank you, Mayor.
At this point, do we have any persons wishing to speak on items not on the agenda?
I do not have any in-person requests to speak on non-agendized items. Let me see if there's any Zoom participants. I do have one request to speak.
Please, thank you.
Ms. Armin, go ahead.
Good morning, Honorable Mayor and council members. My name is Armin N. Sarkson, and I'm an outreach analyst with the California Department of Insurance. And I'm joining you today to share a brief overview of the department and how we can serve San Marino residents. The California Department of Insurance is a state agency regulating all lines of insurance, such as homeowners, auto, life, just to name a few. We regulate insurance companies, we license agents and brokers, conduct market compliance reviews, and investigate and prosecute insurance fraud. Our role is to ensure that every California consumer is protected from insurance fraud and abuse. So if you have any insurance-related questions or problems, you may call us at our hotline, which is 1-800-927-4357. Again, that number is 1-800-927-4357. Our hotline is answered Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And additionally, you may visit insurance.ca.gov to learn more about how the department can serve you. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on a non-agenda item? Seeing none, I would like to use this moment to share a comment of mine. We normally do not have the honor of this type of attendance at our meeting, and I think it is so important to call out some incredible employees of our city. As some of you know, three nights ago, what happened to be three doors away from my home. There was a fully engulfed home in flame. And there were quite a few local fire and police departments present along with our staff. And you would be just so incredibly proud of our public safety employees who were present. And I would just like to briefly call out three. Corporal Kevin Cordeschi was there through the night using radio control to keep all the coordination going. Imagine a street closed down with fire vehicles and battalion chief cars and ambulances. When I first ran into Officer Jocelyn Sorano, she was covered in sweat, and I said, "What is going on?" And she was so proud of having knocked on all of the perimeter doors, asking people to temporarily evacuate. And from our fire department, Mark Dondville just did an amazing job coordinating the work of all the different cities involved in this effort. We in San Marino have so much to be proud of. Thank you to all of those who worked so hard that evening. Do I have a motion and a second to waive further readings?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong.
Yes.
Councilmember Shepard Rami.
Yes.
Councilmember Udi.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Talt.
Yes.
Mayor Jacobowski.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item number one, award of a construction agreement for the San Marino Center renovation project. May we please have a presentation from City Manager Marlo?
Yes, indeed, Mayor. Thank you so much. Good morning, Mayor, Council. As Mayor indicated, many members of the community. It's nice to see you all here today. And one more coming in now. It's very exciting. Theoretically, this is the end of a very long process, so I will try to be brief today. The San Marino Center renovation started as a staff idea in fall of 2019, was discussed with Council beginning in early 2020, including the idea both of renovating the building and also discussions about the programming in it. And the San Marino Center Task Force was formed by the Council in the summer of 2020. There have been many actions along the way. We've all lived it for over two years and countless council meetings, so I will not rehash it. Most recently, jumping to the recent time, on June 13, the Council approved the design of the project, certified the EIR, which is the environmental review process, and directed staff to go out to bid. As a result of that EIR, there are only three possibilities for this building. The first is to do nothing. The building, as you know, has significant ADA and deferred maintenance issues, will likely no longer really be usable in anything like the way that it has been, and we would move forward without a project here. The second possibility is what is on your agenda today, which is to proceed with this project. If you do that, the ADA and deferred maintenance issues will be completed, historic guidelines will be followed, and the interior and the exterior will get refreshed, become more efficient, modernized within historic guidelines, and be more usable for the community. The third option is to decide conceptually that you only want to do the ADA and deferred maintenance fixes. Because of the EIR, you actually cannot stop there any longer. There are historic guidances that will need to be followed. The exterior would be not refreshed. The interior would not be redesigned for usability. We would be able to fix the water spots, the wallpaper, but we would still need to do significant construction because now that has been required by the EIR. If that were the process you wanted to use, just in case, I consulted with the architect, and it appears that's a probable cost for that. And as you know, the probable cost ended up being virtually exactly what the actual cost is estimated to be. The probable cost for just the ADA, deferred maintenance, and newly required historic guidelines is approximately 5.98 million. I should also say that that number will certainly increase if you decide to go that route. You cannot choose that option today. It was not part of the EIR process, so that option is not available to you this morning. If you wanted to do that, you would need to reject the bids today. We would discontinue this project, and in next year's CIP process, you could put the new project in, and then we would essentially begin again. That 5.98 number would likely rise. You would have new change orders for the architect because we would need new plans drawn and so forth, and we also would lose another year on the construction costs, so those would likely go up as well. But that 5.98 number is the best one that I have at the moment. Just as a reminder, this building cannot be torn down. We have had conversations in the early days about whether to renovate it or tear it down and start fresh. Those choices are no longer available to us. The EIR process did confirm that this is a historic building, and therefore, we cannot tear it down. So that is not an available option. To move forward with this project, if that's what the Council chooses to do, all that's left to do is to award the contracts. That process was overseen by Interim Director Parks and Public Works, Robert Newman. He unfortunately is in the middle of a large body of water today and not able to be here. So we will do our best to answer your questions in his absence. There are three contracts that you're being asked to approve today. The first, the biggest one, is the construction contract. As you know, staff pre-qualified firms last year. There were a total of six firms that were pre-qualified based on a very set, clear process that needed to be used by the state. Out of those six, two of them ended up bidding. The other four were incredibly busy with work. We did check to see why they didn't bid, and they just didn't have any availability for it. So two of the six bid, CABD Construction is the low bidder. The reference checks came back satisfactory. And as you know from previous conversations we've had about street paving and so forth, in these kinds of public works contracts, we are required to award to the lowest bidder unless there's some reason that they can appropriately and legally be rejected, and there aren't any here. Their reference checks, as I mentioned, came back very good. You are also being asked to approve a construction management contract, and I have learned that this is more important than the actual contractor because this is the company that keeps them on the straight and narrow. So the recommendation is to award that agreement to Griffin Structures. There's a lot of information about them in your agenda packet. They have quite a lot of expertise. Interim Director Newman has worked with them on numerous projects and speaks incredibly highly of them, and has told me that we are very lucky that they bid on this, and that's the recommendation, and that is why. The final contractor being asked to approve tonight is for Native American Monitoring Services. That is required by the EIR. There is no option about whether or not to do that. We must do that. And so you have an agreement with the Kish Nation Resources Management Group to do that monitoring. The motion addresses specific technical amounts of money, all the actions that you need to take. But overall, the project probable cost estimate, as you know, was 8.337 million. The actual project cost, now that we have the bids, is looking like 8.364 million, which is just less than $27,000 more than the estimate that we had last month. So essentially, the actual cost has come in at about $26,000 higher than the probable cost, which is a pretty good estimate. Before I transition here a little bit, I have to thank several people. First, I must thank Interim Public Works Director, Robert Newman, Community Development Director, C. Joe Figueroa. They have worked incredibly hard. I also want to thank our Public Works Management Analyst, Mr. Robert Baumann, sitting over there, who has also done an exceptional amount of work on this issue and has become a relative expert in this in a very short period of time. So very grateful for him. I also must thank our city attorney, Joe Montez, and his office's Sequois Specialist, Steve Valivas, who worked with us tirelessly on all of the many turns that this took over the last year. I appreciate it. I, of course, must thank our council liaisons. Your liaisons are Vice Mayor Talt and Councilmember Udi. And for over two years, they have worked hard on this project and provided lots of help, assistance, and guidance to staff in the task force, and we appreciate that. And of course, I must thank the task force, half of which are sitting out here. This is a group of community members that represented a wide swath of perspectives in the community that were pulled together. And if you have been watching the council meetings where they have spoken before, you know that they started off with very diverse viewpoints and spent a lot of time talking and respecting each other, and came to, I think, respect, appreciate each other in big ways, and have unified on a number of things, and we'll hear from them here shortly. But it is no understatement to say that it is potentially the best group of people I have ever worked with. It's really been a privilege. And last but not least, I would be remiss if I didn't thank our former Public Works Director, Michael Throne, and our former Community Development Director, Aldo Cervantes, for all of the work that they did on this. We literally would not be here without all of their hard work and dedication and efforts. I really am grateful that we've had such amazing partners as we have gone through this project. Speaking of the task force, I would like to offer task force members an opportunity to speak and give their presentation. And when they conclude, I'll ask the liaisons if either of you have anything you'd like to add, and then I will have just a couple of concluding remarks, and then we will be concluded, Mayor. So we do have some members of the task force here, and it's my understanding that Mr. Calvin Low will be kicking us off today. So come on up. I think we have four members today that will be speaking there. Thank you.
Thank you, Malo, and Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmember. My name is Calvin Low. I live in...
You can actually just move the mic.
Big. Okay. Okay. My name is Calvin Low. I live in 1305 Oxford Row, and I'm also a member of the task force. And thank you again for approving such an important, major, important project last month. I know it's never easy when making a decision involving such a big financial decision as such. So as a real estate and as a management professional, usually the first thing after we acquire an older, reused building, the first thing, of course, it will be always working on deferred maintenances and taking care of safety-related issues to make sure everything's up to code, and also assess the highest and best use for that building, and then set plans, renovation plans, to achieve that highest and best use of any building. So for San Marino Center, besides all the deferred maintenance and repairs that would be needed for the building, and there are also a lot of co-compliance issues, as Dr. Malo just mentioned earlier. Actually, as you look up right now, there's, you know, I've been attending a lot of meetings and sometimes events in this building. When I look up, there's, that always concerns me when I look up. There's not even one fire sprinkler, any public use building. I don't, and when there's, well, for people to use public use like this, there's not even one fire sprinkler like this. It's a potential hazard. And for a big open thing like this, this building probably wasn't built, well, up to, it's probably not earthquake compliance, you know, compliant to earthquake standard to stay. So if I'm rebuilding one of this, for this building, I probably would be quite worried and then, you know, to take, to care of some of the situation immediately. And also, there's no ADA, it's idea accessible, and of course, I'm assuming it's not energy efficient. So even with the very limited use of the building because of the condition it's in right now, I think San Marino Center is facing a lot of potential safety and liability issues. And also, historical preservation. It has been, always been a very essential element in our beautiful San Marino. Given that this property has a historical significance, the only option, of course, like Dr. Malo just mentioned, is now just to preserve the building. Then we should, I have, actually, I have pressure of owning and have opportunities of restoring some historical buildings in the past and some undermales that. And the process actually could be tedious and very stressful sometimes, and could be costly. But again, at the end, when you see a building, a historical building is being brought back to life at its highest and best use for people to enjoy, it's actually very fulfilling and satisfying. And actually, with some creative thinking, some new revenue can be generated, you know, with a new facility that's being, that are being remodeled. And again, preservation is an action. It's not just a slogan and propaganda for people to talk about. And leaving any historical building unattended to deteriorate is not preservation. It's really not preservation. It's just talking about preservation is not preservation. So San Marino Center, of course, has many maintenance and safety issues. We cannot be, it cannot be, that cannot be neglected. Delaying the renovation project will only make this problem getting worse over time and even more costly to deal with in the future. And just like any homeowners, if you have a house that has safety issues or deferred maintenances, and you have the budget, then ask them when the remodeling, when those should be repaired. Most of them probably would tell you yesterday. So, and then even with the inflation, it's high, and it may subside a little, but actually, the annual CPI will only go up, will continue to go up year after year in general. As I look back, I checked since the '60s. There's only three years with negative CPIs or deflation, and it usually goes back up right away. And so as you wait, it only gets more and more expensive. And material costs and labor costs, in my experience, only, only, only go up over time. It never, it never goes down as time goes by. So, so now with all the initial architectural engineering fees, EIR report and other consultation fee costs already been spent. San Marino Center renovation project should start ASAP. So this center can be, can provide highest and best use to our community. And, again, and then, which is what this building was designed and built for, and which is the community center we can all enjoy and be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see, John Chou.
Good morning, Mayor Jacobowski, and members of the city council. It's a privilege for me to be here this morning and also to have been on the task force to discuss what we should do about the San Marino Center. We've had many, many meetings, as City Manager Marlo explained, as far as what should be done and as far as what should we spend to renovate the property. The, I think the first question that we addressed is, does a city need a community center? I think the fact that we're having this meeting in a community center as opposed to City Hall answers that question. Second, I've been to numerous city club of San Marino dinners here. So again, this has served that purpose because without this facility, where would that have taken place? Most likely would have taken place outside of San Marino, even though we do have some homes here that are fairly large that can probably host us. But I don't think that that would be a permanent solution. So there are numerous ideas that this facility can be used for. So now, just to the next question, which is, what is the condition of the San Marino Center? There's a lot of deferred maintenance. It's also not up to ADA standards. And so that is something that the city needs to address because of the potential liability if it does not take care of that. And so now we'll get to the next question, how much is it going to cost? We've gone over that numerous times. I, for one, with a finance background, have raised that question. Why is it, why does it cost so much? Vice Mayor Talt did explain to me that there is something called the prevailing wages that the city has to follow when it awards contracts. So that's where this roughly $5.9 million is a necessity and not an option. Unfortunately, we did incur additional, almost a little over $700,000 as a result of a EIR environmental impact report that was brought up due to a concern from a community member. That could have been avoided, but since it was brought up, we had to address it. And as a result of that report, an additional over $700,000 was added to the project. When you look at those figures and what the ultimate cost is going to be, really, the additional cost is bringing the outside up to date, some of the interior, some outdoor space. So it's really not that significant as an overall, as far as the overall project is concerned. In other words, we're not adding a lot of cost to this facility. It is really just to bring it up to code and to give it back to the community to use for its purpose. And so what is the other alternative? Is there any other alternative? Well, I like to cite a recent example of a facility that's not within the orders of San Marino. That is Tuohy's. And Tuohy's was fenced off first. And when I drove by there, I thought that it was going to be like that for who knows how many years or decades because I thought they did that to keep out the homeless because I have seen some homeless people sleep at their doorsteps. Unfortunately, they ended up tearing that place down. Now, I don't want to see that happen to the San Marino Center where if we don't do anything, if we don't renovate it, bring it up to code, we don't take care of the deferred maintenance, and the city decides that the liability is too, too big of an issue for the city to have to absorb, then it really doesn't have any choice but to fence it off. And if it fences it off, it's going to become an eyesore on Huntington Drive for who knows how many years, if not decades. Because as City Manager Marlo explained to us, the cost of the renovation is not going to go down. It's most likely going to go up the longer that we wait. The maintenance is going to continue to go up. We don't have the option of tearing it down. So the conclusion of the task force is, let's go ahead and renovate it. Let's bring everything up to code. Let's do it in a physically responsible manner. And once everything is taken care of, now we can return to San Marino, the San Marino Community Center, back to the community for it to enjoy. Those are my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I see Ms. Jamie Gertmanian has joined us. Would you like to speak?
All right. I was not actually prepared to speak, but I thought I should show my face. I am Jamie Gertmanian. I was also on the task force. I have three children. Two are still in San Marino schools. And I felt that it was really important to show up today because my kids have gone through the schools, have gone through Boy Scouts. Everyone, every function has used this center. And I'm really sad to say, if you look around, that for San Marino being such a beautiful community that we've let it get like this. So I think we need a community center. I think as a community, we can use our center. And I think it's shortsighted for people that maybe don't have kids any longer, even my kids at the age they are, that we're being so shortsighted that we're not giving it to the rest of our young community. So I hope that you'll look at that.
Thank you. And Mr. Raymond Chang. How, we're not, Mr. Riege, we're not quite ready for public comment just yet. No, it's Raymond Chang. We appreciate your passion, though. I know you're ready.
Good morning, Mayor, and good morning, members of city council. My name is Raymond Chang. I've been a long-term resident in the city. I raised three grandchildren here. A lot of them attended this particular building when they were in high school and then elementary school. I currently have eight grandchildren. They all live in the city. So this date back about 40 years ago. So this is really home. As a, one of the Associate Director for Cedar Sinai Medical Center, my day job is to oversee capital construction projects. Each year, we do about $250 to $300 million worth of projects. So I want to kind of share some of my experience with the council and the community. Cedar Sinai has just become number one in California, number two in the whole nation. We spend a lot of our effort, money, and time providing facility, world-class facility, so that we can provide world-class services. San Marino is the first-class city. I think we deserve a first-class facility for our citizens. When we look at projects, we try to look at three things: scope, schedule, and budget. We need to identify the scope. Is it the correct thing to do? And then we look at the schedule, and then we look at the budget. I try to analyze this particular project. Is the scope right? Yes, it is. It has, it will serve our community well for the next 60 to 100 years. The task force has done a lot of great work together with the group to identify the correct scope of the project. So yes, the scope is right because otherwise, we couldn't even meet the very basic ADA code requirement. The handicap accessibility is not there. The energies code is not there. We just need to do something about it. We just need to do something about it, no matter what. So the scope is right. The schedule is probably our biggest enemy in construction. Time is not the obvious essence with the inflation right in front of us, with the supply chain issue that we are fighting. And with the pandemic, none of these are working for our favor. We need to take care of that immediately. So the, the schedule is now. The budget, we are fortunate to have the responsible lowest bidder that is within our regional estimate. And the sooner we make that decision, lock that number in, order the long-end items, that's the only way we can do the, the project successfully. I, my past 20-something years' experience tells me that you never get a better price by waiting. It does never happen. I, I served on the LA Community College District. We had projects that are over budget. They send it back to the designer, redesign it, take out a lot of stuff, repaid it nine months later, same price or more. To just keep losing every time. So with that said, I think it's the right thing to do. I want to thank the city council and mayor for making the right decision for our future of the city. And I urge you to award the contract as soon as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. And unless my eyes deceive me, Mr. Steve Dohmeyer's our final task force member.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. My name is Steve Dohmeyer. I am also a member of the task force and the Chair of the Library Board of Trustees. And I wanted to thank our fellow Library Board of Trustees members, Deborah Sedun and Lois Derry, for being here today in support of this project as well. I probably will get in trouble if I don't mention my wife being here too. So thank you for being here, Carla, to support this. This is a no-brainer. A city desperate for more community activity space to serve its citizens acquires a property right next door to their existing library and realizes the opportunity to create a unified campus to fulfill the city's many service and recreation needs. A survey is taken to gather citizen input on the project. Town hall meetings and forums are conducted to hear everyone's concerns and answer questions. A task force is assembled to represent all relevant factions of the neighborhood and provide an array of skill sets and professional expertise that will benefit the project while lessening the burden on the city council. The goal of the task force, to work with the design team and architects that the final result would be a beautiful building that would meet the broadest needs of the people of San Marino. For two years, this task force, representing a cross-section of the community, meticulously gathers information, reviews plans, asks probing questions, discusses all options, devoting hours and hours to ensure a quality structure is created that is functional, affordable, aesthetically pleasing, and will serve the community for years and years to come. Every aspect of the project, big and small, is carefully analyzed and talked about. From where the entryways and interior walls should be, to what type of tread should be used on the interior service walkway, even what color of crepe myrtle would best serve as the most attractive tree for the entryway. This has been a true project of the people. Directed by our city council, guided along by our hard-working city staff, the San Marino Center renovation task force has always had, as its guiding principle, the thought of what will best benefit the community. Renovating this building now will allow it, once again, to serve the many groups that have used it in the past. The City Club, PTA, Bridge Club, National Charity League, San Marino Schools Foundation, Chamber of Commerce, Rotary Club, as well as all the Recreation Division programs for children and adults. It will also be the largest indoor city-owned venue, perfect for future town halls and city council meetings. We will all benefit from this becoming a modern, safe, usable space that's up to code, appropriately furnished and visually inviting. The renovation of the San Marino Center is a great investment in our community at a time when we can well afford to make it. We know now is the time to do it. Let's transform this building into a place where we can all make wonderful new memories together. Thank you.
Thank you. And I apologize that my eyes might have deceived me. I believe Al Bog is on Zoom. Did he want to make a comment as well?
He sent a message and asked that I read it, but it's on my laptop. It's that one, so we're going to get creative.
Okay.
Mr. Al Bog said, "I am a member of the task force. I am unable to attend in person, but want to endorse the statements of the other members of the task force and encourage the council to approve the contracts." Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. City Clerk Baker, Council Liaison, Vice Mayor Tal, Council Member Udi. Did you want to add anything to the presentation at this point?
Yeah, I have not much to say. The task force is not already set up, but I'm really proud of the process that the city went through. It took a long time, two years. You know, a lot of community outreach, as Steve said, the task force getting together, worked really hard, a lot of give and take, very respectful of each other's different opinions. And the result moved forward really smoothly. So I'm really proud of the process. I want to thank the task force.
And I did have, as Mr. Dohmeyer said, this has been a long process. This has been one that has thought about every option, thought about costs, thought about uses, thought about really the subjective benefits of having a community center. And I appreciate their hard work and I appreciate everyone coming out today so that we could hear your opinion. Thank you.
All right, very good. Then to conclude, for this morning's conversation, the scope is only to approve and award the contracts and appropriate the additional funds that are needed from our previous rough estimate. That's all that's in front of us today. The motion is in your staff report and your agenda, and it is lengthy, so I am not going to just read it to you. It only includes the specific technical actions the council needs to take this morning. You will not see that $8.3 million number in the motion, which is why I wanted to be sure to say it in the staff report for transparency. I am available for questions. And since this morning's decision is financial in nature, Finance Director Chung is available if you have questions about that as well. And that concludes the presentation. Thank you for everyone who participated in the presentation. At this point, let's move on to city council questions. Stephen Wong, any questions?
Oh, no, no questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Shepard Romey, any questions?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I know that we don't have our past directors that were involved with this project from the beginning and nor our current interim director here today. But I want to know, since the pre-qualification of the six bidders was done in 2021 and prior to the current plans, which we are voting on today, it was when it was still a Spanish, if you will, designed buildings. It was pre-RER, EIR, and pre any involvement by our historic consultant or tribal consultant or the studies, many studies that were part of that EIR. And so I want to know if the pre-approved bidders had seen or was there a secondary pre-approval process since all of those plans changed in our EIR?
The pre-approval process, the pre-qualification process, isn't related to a specific set of plans. It's simply related to the contractor's qualifications. I'm sure City Attorney Mondes can speak to it more. But the pre-qualification process was not based on plans.
Okay. And was the pre-qualifications updated, since it was, it's now almost a year, nine months, to relook at the records of the bid, those bidding companies, whether they have any complaints with them with the California State Board of Contracting or anything like that? Has any other pre, what did you call it? Qualification process been done by our current interim director in the past nine months or by anybody on staff with the city at this time to look into those that were bidding on this?
The pre-qualification process was not revisited. But once we got the two bids in, and this was the low bidder, Director Newman did conduct reference checks and did do another check on that company to be sure that they were still appropriate, and they were.
And no further companies were pre-qualified in order to bid on this? So we only have a high and a low, which are about $1.5 million apart. Is that correct?
As it turns out, yes.
Okay. And the, in your initial presentation about the cost estimates for just updating the building, I can't remember. I think you had a 5-point-something million-dollar figure. And in the past, we've been told that our original budget was set at 4 million. Granted, that was a while ago. But that was also based upon renovating, doing the public safety work and ADA requirements. So that was originally cost estimated to be less than 4 million. And now we have a 5-point-something, 9 million, almost $6 million estimate from Crane as well to just bring the building, if you would, up to code.
Yes, because we can't just build, bring, bring the building up to code. You're correct. The cost estimated in 2020 for just deferred maintenance and ADA was much lower. Two things happened that changed those costs. One is time, as we've talked about today. So it's two years later, and just as the cost for the project that you're considering today has gone up significantly, the cost for just the deferred maintenance and ADA has also gone up the same way. The other thing that happened was the EIR. And as the task force member said, there are additional costs that have been incurred for that now that we must incur. That's about 700,000, I think, one of the task force members said that. And there are now certain pieces of construction and changes we would need to make if we did any deferred maintenance to the building. So the cost estimate in 2020 did not include all the historic guidelines. It did not include making sure that any doorknob that we replaced was exactly the same. It did not include taking out the chamber office, because that's not part of the historic footprint. So there are additional costs for construction that went on once it turned out that it wasn't just deferred maintenance, it had to be a historic project as well.
And is there an estimate, that's the 700,000 or 1.5 million? Is that what you're saying today, based upon an estimate by whom?
Rick Crane, who has provided all of our estimates. His, I'm just looking at it at the moment, his precise estimate to do the deferred maintenance and ADA improvements plus the historic things that we now are required to do is five, sorry, I'll go slow, it's a long number,
All right. And has there ever been a utilization study for the new uses done?
I'm not sure what you mean by utilization study, but the presentation to council in April of 2020 was all about how this new facility would be used by the Recreation Division. You heard that present in this very room, the beginning of COVID, it seems like a lifetime ago. And there was a direction and support and approval from the council to do that.
All right. And I think I'm unsure whether the plan before us, the proposed project before us, includes any assessment of, I believe it's one of our committee members taking into account the highest and best use of the space. For example, we're doing things like moving the kitchen. And I'm not sure, was there ever any study, or I don't know what the correct word is, plan and assessment of the highest and best utilization of the space, interior and exterior? Putting the historic requirements aside, we're still doing things internally, plus we're actually adding patios externally. So I'm wondering, aside from the task force recommendations, how those fit into a business plan for utilizing the building later and whether those are all necessary costs? Not the dream big, I want to build the best community center, but are those necessary? Or was there a study or any outside professional who came in to look at the building? I know that there are people who do this, just like there are independent people who do cost estimates, and they have not been consulted. We've always used Crane, which some people have, including myself, have a problem with the expertise here for our community, the expertise necessary for historical resources, and even knowledge of the San Gabriel Valley, let alone knowledge of San Marino. So I'm just trying to figure out, what did we do in terms of some of these things? Has anything been done as the plans have changed or even originally?
We did not choose to bring a consultant aboard and incur the cost of doing a utilization study. I can assure you, and I'm sure the task force members can speak to this themselves or the liaisons, there was significant conversation at the task force level about what the best and highest use of this facility was and what changes should be made. We specifically, at the council's direction, had, as one of the task force members said, specific seats on the task force for different perspectives. We specifically had two people from the architect and construction world on there to deal with some of that. We had real estate professionals on there. We had community people on there so that everybody would be able to bring their expertise that we wouldn't, I'm so sorry, have to pay for. We got their services for free. And they spent quite a lot of time going over those various issues a couple of years ago. And so that is what led to the decision that the council made last month.
All right. And, and as well, some people with expertise from the community were rejected and did not have the honor or pleasure of serving on the task force. So I'm aware of several professionals in the community that did not have a position at that table. So just to clarify the record on that.
Thank you. I think those are some of my questions. Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Udi.
Yeah. My, my questions are all going to be financial, because I understand the total project is 8.4 and the covering the deferred maintenance is just under 6 or 5.9. So as I do that math, it's really a $2.5 million decision between minimum of what needs to be done and doing it right. So Finance Director Chung, what's our current reserve?
For our total cash and investments as of May, as we're busy closing our June month, was $45 million.
Okay. And then when I look back a couple of years ago, when, when, you know, we were seated in 2017, what was the reserve at that time?
I would say back in 2017, we were close to $25 million.
Okay, so we've grown the reserve about $20 million in the last four and a half years. And while at the same time, you know, going after deferred maintenance with streets and sidewalks and some of the other necessary approvals.
Yes, four years ago, the city council made that prudent decision to create a separate CIP fund where they ceded with $15 million and contributed every year. And total so far has been $25 million into the CIP.
Okay. And then what's our, kind of our average annual operating surplus?
Annual surplus for the last four years and for this particular fiscal year in my budget was 3.5 million.
Okay, so we, so we have the opportunity to add back to the reserves about $3.5 million. That's kind of what we've, we've been doing.
Yes.
Okay. And then we also have, our annual operating budget is what, about 30 million?
It's 32 million dollars.
And we have that, that artificial cap of 40%?
Yes, our fiscal policy dictates that we keep 40% reserve.
Okay, so then we have north of $30 million that we have essentially earmarked towards capital improvement programs.
I wouldn't say 30, but we do have in our, in the budget, when I come to the council every year, we produce a five-year forecast for the CIP budget. And we've dedicated 20, 21 million dollars.
Okay, okay. So do you think, moving forward, that with this project, we'll put the city at financial risk at all?
No, absolutely not, no.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further?
No.
Vice Mayor Tal?
We purchased this, we purchased the building in what year?
I don't know the answer to that question. Probably many people in the audience do know.
Do you know how much we paid for it?
I don't.
Do you, and perhaps Finance Director Chung, how much have we spent on this building, let's say, in the last year?
Since this, for just this project.
No, just in, in maintenance.
Maintenance, I don't have that. I don't know. Yeah, I don't, I can find out. I don't have that number. I know how much we spent regards to this project specifically, but not on maintenance, on our annual maintenance on this building now.
Well, has anybody gone back and taken a look at the money we've spent on maintenance because of its condition?
The maintenance at both this building and Stoneman have been minimal. The facilities are, I know this is not the technical term, but are so far gone that slight fixes, given that the council has been in the process of considering a major overhaul, didn't seem financially prudent. As far as I know, the only thing that I'm aware of in this building that we've done in the last year is several months ago, the back door broke and we actually couldn't open it or shut it again once. couldn't open it or shut it again once it came, anyway. So we fixed that. As many people probably came in that back door this morning, we fixed that. Otherwise, we have not chosen to put much money in because it would be a drop in luck compared to what the building needs.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. As I heard members of the task force speak, it opened up a few questions for me. First, I'd like to say since Robert is not here today, when I received my packet, I had some concerns about the recommended successful bidders. So I gave him a call, and we spoke at great length. And actually, the timing of this and having Mr. Newman here, I felt was very prophetic, because even though Michael Throne has left us, his expertise was water, wastewater, and those issues. And considering we've got eight million dollars in those expenses coming up in the coming years, he really set us on a great course. Mr. Newman, with over twenty-five years in city governments, really seems to have an expertise in construction remodeling and those types of issues. So when I brought to him my concerns about both the contractor and the management company, he firmly reiterated what City Manager Marlowe stated. He said, it's not so much a construction company, but your management company. And it helped me to understand why we have forty-six pages in our packet about Griffin, who will be overseeing this project. It gave me great comfort to, to hear that from Mr. Newman. So unfortunately, he cannot be here today, but I wanted to share what questions I asked. I'd like to move on to the task force. One point that hasn't been stated strongly enough for me, that I'd like to begin by saying, is this task force was created immediately after we passed the motion to explore the San Marino Center. We each on city council were asked to nominate people, and that list was whittled down to give a good cross-section of folk. And for me, the most important statement can be, it's not owned by us, it's owned by the community, and the task force represents the community. With that, here's my question, I'm not sure who the appropriate person is to answer this. As Mr. Dohmeyer stated, I didn't realize how much you got into the weeds, which I love, because I would do the same identical thing in my home. Can you tell me, I understand some of our cost, costs went up after you did your thorough review of this project. Could somebody speak to the approximate increase in cost and what types of things you included, as I was initially told, so that our grandchildren could use it? Could somebody speak to that?
Let me try to tackle that. We don't have that number for you today. The main change that I remember, there are two main changes. One is to literally and figuratively kind of break down the walls between this site and the library site. As Mr. Dohmeyer said, the opportunity to create a community services campus where the two buildings would flow together, not to bring up bad memories, but originally, we had thought that this building would potentially be a Spanish-esque style that would match the library, and that was very exciting. But even once we knew after the EIR process that that couldn't be, there were still ways to blend the transition between the two. And that required a couple of changes in architecture fees to change the way that the, the two sites were, were legally structured. And the other major change that I remember the task force making is excellent improvements in AV. So I laugh, obviously, we've all been having meetings in here for two years and gone through, you know, microphones that don't work, and Zoom that doesn't work, and the screen that doesn't work. And we can't forget the day that we heard the, I believe it was Chinese language radio coming through the speakers. So they spent some time making sure that this would be a facility that would be usable and modern for whatever groups might be interested in using it. But we don't have a breakdown of what those things were, but I certainly can tell you, and I presume that the liaisons can as well, this project is much better in nature as a result. And again, just as a reminder, the design of the building has already been approved by the council, and today it's just about awarding the contracts.
Thank you so much. I also want to talk about the need issue. And I hate to put you on the spot, but Chief Rueda, if I understand correctly, you had a personal situation while you were here. I believe it was, I'm not certain, a city club meeting where you were assisting some residents. Could you share what the comments were and what, what, what happened?
Good morning, council. I can't share the expletives, but, but it is not uncommon. Police Chief and I have helped escort really some of our most vulnerable out of this center. The uneven pavement in the back, I know Chief Incontro, and I walked a couple out the back, and the uneven pavement was a, was an issue for them, along with Chief Incontro. Again, one of our, one of our residents that attended city club just had a very difficult time navigating the front entry here. And it is not uncommon that, that I've watched people walk out of the center to make sure they made it to their vehicles. It's dark. They don't have a clear path. It's not smooth out the back. And there's no, there's no real handicap access to the, to the parking area where the parking stalls are closest to the center. So for most of us that jump up the stairs and walk up here, uneven pavement is not an issue. For others that do have challenges with access, it's a real problem. And it, I always think it's a shame, and, and that was confirmed that evening, that we live in such a beautiful community, we live and work here, and we still struggle with a facility that is old and doesn't meet current needs. And it's the law that, that we comply with the Disabilities Act to make it easier for these folks to access events that are occurring here in the center.
Thank you very much. And I apologize, I hadn't realized this had occurred on multiple occasions. And thank you too, to Chief Incontro for both of you assisting. I'm sorry, I didn't realize that. Thank you for your
You're welcome.
comments.
Mayor, I apologize. Industrious Finance Director has gotten the answer to Vice Mayor's question. We purchased the San Marino Center apparently in 2005 for the bargain price of six hundred and sixty thousand.
Thank you. And I have one final question. And actually, this is from a memo that you sent to council, so it isn't necessarily a public document, but it was in July of 2020. And you were referencing to, over two years ago, twenty-five or so different steps that we would need to take to move this project forward. And could you comment on one of your statements? Excuse me, one second here. There is no need to have a compressed schedule that would bypass public input. What did that mean?
So, a lifetime ago in 2020, the genesis of this project, as I alluded to earlier, was, well, I didn't allude to this part, the, the council and the community have been having discussions about Stoneman for quite a long time that predate me. It's been very difficult to make decisions about Stoneman. As I've sat through the meetings and as I've looked at the records of the previous meetings, people have very different ideas about what should happen there. The recreation division and programming has been very tightly linked to that facility, which has made it different to unlink it and think about what else could happen there. It, of course, has a historic component as well, which would limit our choices going forward. But after years of not being able to solve that, and after hearing the council's interest in paring down the recreation program, we initially discussed moving the recreation program to the San Marino Center out of Stoneman, because if it's going to be a pared-down program, Stoneman really was going to be too big for us, and this would have been the perfect size. We had also just re-merged the two divisions back, the library and the recreation divisions, into the auspices of one department. So it again created campus, as I mentioned earlier. And once we knew that that was possible, we brought it to the council. We had assumed that we were going to move forward to make it look like the library. And then there was some discussion in early 2020 about, no, perhaps we should keep the modern-ish architecture style of the building, and what did the community want to do? So there was discussion two years ago about making sure that we got community input on the design of the building. Former Director Throne and former Director Servantes and I refer to it as our COVID roadshow. We went to all of the commissions, we went to the various bodies in town, city club and so forth, and gave presentations, showed draft plans of both, got input, we created an online survey and so forth. So I think that what you're referring to is, we had at the time thought that if we used an expeditious timeframe, we would be able to capitalize potentially on cheaper construction costs, because potentially, nobody would have the funds during COVID to be doing construction. So there was interest by the council in moving forward expeditiously, but there was also interest from the council in doing this community outreach to be sure that we used the proper design that was supported by the community. Of course, that design was the Spanish style, and we ended up not being able to move forward with that for the EIR reasons. But that, at the time, I suspect that that sentence was me trying to tell you that we could still move forward expeditiously and have time for public input, which is what we did up until September of 2020, when we ended up having to take a few months and redirect to doing an EIR. So, yes.
May I just add on the Stoneman piece, because both Councilmember Wong and I were involved in some of the process. And that was that at one point, well, when, when the city purchased it from the school district, there was a 711 committee that was, that was put together. And the 711 committee was on behalf of the school district to determine whether or not we sold them what was the, the, the most appropriate use. And it came down between selling it to a developer or having the city. So they went ahead and sold it to the city. And then we undertook an evaluation as to putting the recreation department there. And just to bring it up to ADA, and this, and you're talking 2015, sixteen dollars, it would have been two and a half to three million dollars. They then took a look at, okay, if we can, if, and I can't remember if this was before or after the ADA determination, but it was, if we're going to make this the community center recreation apartment, and you've got to remember, this is in mid-2010, 2020, the, the price tag was ten to eleven million dollars to do what the city want. And at that point, the, the council rejected the idea of spending that type of money. Now, in today's dollars, that would be probably double that cost if we were to look at, at Stoneman. So that, that's what happened with respect to Stoneman, and why I, I believe we, we wanted to make sure that we got only appropriate input for this, for the, the city center to be here.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I have a question?
Yes, let's go back around if there are any subsequent questions. Yes, Councilmember Wong?
Yes, so what's the present value of the, this building? If we purchase a six hundred sixty thousand back in 2005?
We have not looked into that cost.
Can you look into that? Just curious.
I mean, we can get that to you at some point, sure. Anything?
Check Zillow.
We all may want to buy this property. Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Councilwoman Shepherd, Romney, any additional questions?
Yeah, I was, I am curious, one more thing that I didn't get a chance to ask. So thank you, Mayor. Did the changed plans, what we have currently, you know, with the historical revisions taken into account, which essentially was mostly exterior changes to preserve the existing look, if you will, or architectural significance, did, I'm wondering if in the process of the last six months, if the most recent plans ever went before planning commission, just like all construction projects would have, and they're really the experts in our city in terms of, you know, reviewing the details of plans architecturally and aesthetically for our community?
They did not. Projects like this need to be approved by either the planning commission or the council, and since this was your project, we just moved directly to you.
Right. And, and we gave direction when we approved the task force at any plans and at points before coming to council, it's in the record that everything would go before planning commission, again, as a final step, because they also had problems with the original crane, if you will, and gave comments. It did go the first time around through the planning commission.
I apologize, that is not my recollection. We obviously had some turnover in staff. If that was the direction that may have fallen through the cracks. There was a moment when you specifically requested that the planning commission look at the plans, and your guidance was very specific and constrained about what you wanted them to look at. And so we did take it, we did take it at that point. And, but that was not done with regard to the current plans? No, the specific things you wanted them to look at weren't about design at the time. They were, I think, I almost turned to look for Aldo and Michael. They were, I think, lighting and maybe windows. I apologize, I can't remember. I think this was a year or so ago.
That's okay. I just wanted to see if there was discussion and if it had ever gone before planning commission prior the existing plan that is part of the bid today.
No, it didn't.
Anything further?
That's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Sure. Councilmember Udi, any additional questions? Vice Mayor, any additional questions?
No.
Okay.
Oh, sorry.
Please, go.
How many town hall meetings did you have for this project?
Oh, boy. We probably had, they're asking me questions from a long time ago. We probably had two town hall meetings proper, which is to say, city-sponsored town hall meetings the first Monday of the month. But if you're talking about little t, little h town hall meetings, we went to all of the commissions in 2020. We visited city club, we visited, anybody's visited, I mean.
No, no, I mean just our own town hall meeting for this project. I'm not talking about visiting.
I suspect two.
When was that, 2020 or?
I'm sure one was in 2020. I don't have the dates.
All right, thank you.
Sure. Thank you. Okay, at this point, I'd like to open the item up for public comments. Please note that city council has been limiting public comment to two minutes for an extended period of time, and we will be adhering closely to the limit on this item. Whether, regardless of whether you, your comment is in support or opposition to this item, please be respectful of the two minutes, which will be timed by city staff. And I would also like to thank every single person who has been here for this issue. We, we welcome you today. Do we have any public comment requests?
Yes, we do, Mayor.
Okay. As folks come back, come forward, should you desire, please state your name and address for the record. And city clerk, may we start?
Ms. Sue Viswanathan? Thank you. My name is Sue Viswanathan. I live at 2485 Sherwood Road. Thank you, Mayor and council members for your many years of dedicated service to our community. It's a hard job to take on, and we truly appreciate your sincere efforts and commitment. My comments today pertain to the San Marino Women's Center. As well, as a child, I attended Girl Scout events, and some 25 years ago, my parents hosted my second wedding reception. So you may infer that I have fond memories of the center. I was a project manager and have a double master's degrees, including an MBA from USC. I am concerned that the city is taking on a construction project which will be fraught with excessive cost increases due to the rapidly increasing inflation, massive global supply chain issues, and scarcity of construction materials experienced throughout the country. This is not conjecture, these issues are well-known. This is not conjecture, these issues are well-known. Moreover, it's my understanding that there's not been a single professional estimator on these construction costs. Of the five city council members, three voted in favor of moving forward with this project. Yet two of these members are not seeking reelection. I ask that any decision be postponed until there's a newly seated council, which is just months away. In addition, a decision as large as this, coupled with expected cost increases, which could run into the millions, I ask that all five members of the council should be in agreement before any project concerning the city center moves forward. A majority vote is, is not enough when the risks are so high and you are spending the people's money. But those are not the only reasons why we should not be taking on this particular project at this time.
If you could wrap up with your final sentence or two, please, thank you.
I appreciate it. We need to get our house in order. The city itself has many vacancies, vacancies that are critical to the operation of the city. Vacancies that must be staffed so an expert oversight of such a large project can occur. Filling vacant positions need to be a priority to ensure that a city is staffed with qualified professionals that appreciate and work with the community.
Thank you so much for your comment.
I urge you to hasten slowly. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Hal Harrigan?
Yes.
Hal Harrigan, 745 La Mirada, 47-year resident. Why is it all the fours could speak as long as they wanted, and we only have two minutes?
And, and this is the public comment period, and this is what has been followed for an extended period of time?
I'm going to try to summarize what I feel and most of my neighbors feel. About 18, 20 months ago, you all decided that you're going to go ahead and move forward with the, with renovating. There was no business plan. I didn't really know we had a, a task force, I may have read that. Why isn't the task force have a, have a specific written summary of what they did? The utilization factor, what additional people? My guess is that probably 90% of the people in San Marino have never been in the center. I think it's incumbent on this task force and the council to specifically tell us how much more revenue we're going to generate, what costs we're going to be saving, and the number of people that will truly be utilizing this facility. And I, if you got a task force that did it, they ought to already complete it, complete their report and give it to the citizens of San Marino. There's no Planning Commission review on this. It appeared, a number of us felt that you had circumvented the, the bidding process. As a matter of fact, it's interesting, one of the residents actually made a complaint and got a call, yes, a couple of days ago from an FBI agent. Took him 18 months to finally get it. Finally, the cost on this, when initially was $3 million for a minimal renovation and $4.5 million.
If you can add your final few sentences, thank you.
And all of a sudden, I'm looking in the paper, Councilman Udi saying that if we do a minimal renovation, it's $6 million. And if we do the pro, it's 8.3. The numbers in 18 to 20 minutes, or 18 to 20 months, have doubled. It doesn't make a resident feel very good that the homework has been done in this project and that we really have got our arms around everything, that we have a written report justifying an $8 million expenditure. It's outrageous that the cost have gone from $3 million to $6 million, and from $4 million to 8.3 million. As the city manager said, we had about 20% inflation. And that, that amounts to only about $3.6 to $6 million.
Thank you, Mr. Harrigan. We appreciate you coming to offer your comment.
Ms. Patricia Healy? Mr. Harry Sermanian?
Good morning, Council.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Harry Sermanian. And I wrote a letter to Council, I believe that you received it. Where I should fully support the public concerns. And I think that San Marino deserves a new center. I mentioned in my letter my experience on public works, historical renovations. I spent more than 30 years on that, starting from Central Library, LA, City Hall. And my last project was Griffith Observatory. And believe me, I know what it means to renovate existing buildings. My concern here is, looking around, I have been in this, this building several times. And honestly, I don't see any historical value on this building. And I don't see any architectural value as well, okay? My question is, is this building registered in California's historical roster or not? I read newspapers, article saying some environment or something, blah, blah, blah. I think that personally, I would like to see that. Is this building registered there or not? My time is over. Also, okay, based on my experience of many years, 30-plus years, you are opening a Pandora's box. I fully reject, obviously oppose renovating this building. Give a new one. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Peter Wong?
Good morning, this is Peter Wong, 2395 Fidere Street, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. Thanks for having the staff put together a project budget on remodeling the San Marino Center. Two years has passed, and the world has changed a lot. We have to think about what has transpired. Meeting is getting through Zoom, people are going to meet in different ways. People want to go out, or they stay in town. So whatever is assumption two years ago may not apply today. And just like this as well, we all would have to adapt. So first of all, is it a project that's good to have, or is it a must-have? Do we have alternatives? Have we thought about some logistic opportunities? If we need space for recreation staff, can they be put in commercial offices that can reduce costs and also utilize some empty spots in the city? Do we have a cost and benefit analysis, ROI? Are we investing on something that has a negative return for the city? I cannot believe that EIR is shooting at our own feet, that we are getting into a kind of whirl. It is not registered in this California Historic Register. So there should be opportunity. We have to think about untangling what is tidying us up. We are not a business opportunity that can create revenue to put the best in our city. Quite the opposite, it is our people's money. We loan it to ourselves, we owe it to our residents, and we owe it to our coming generation. So I ask you to think through all that. More haste, less speed. Don't be scared, think through all the processes. I appreciate all the good intent that comes without a doubt. But please do not go into something that has a negative return for generations to come. I have been with you over 20 years on billion-dollar projects, cost always overrun. I'm really concerned there will be over $8 million. What is the stop button to mitigate that? Please tell us and share our thoughts, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Nancy Hoffman?
Thank you, Nancy Hoffman, 1034 Ruendo Road. Listening to this going on for two, three years, and again today, this morning, I have one thing to say. Thank God Mr. Tron is gone. This is all his problem, you got the wrong advice, he did nothing, and this is why we're in this mess. And, I mean, an example is, it took him four years to redo the bathrooms at Lacy Park. He was in very incompetent, because he was not an architect. He also took another two or three years to do the Rose Harbor, because all the plans were already there. He was an engineer and not an architect. And this is why we're in this mess, and I would like to see something be done that we could bring in an architect at this point and help us, because everyone's guessing, well, it could be this or it could be that. This can't go on, and we're just sitting here again at another meeting. What are we going to do? Please get an architect.
Thank you.
Those are all the public comment cards are received so far, so I don't believe we have any other in-person comments.
Thank you, and do we have any folks online wishing to speak?
Yes, we do have one so far, and I'll see if more hands come up. Ms. Shirley Jagels, go ahead.
Good morning, this is Shirley Jagels, 424 Wilson Avenue. Before I start my two minutes, I would like to just continue my introduction to myself and say that two minutes is unacceptable, nor do I believe it is legal. And I would like my comments integrated in the minutes verbatim. Now, will you start the two minutes?
You're in your two minutes, go ahead.
I would, I agree with residents that planning commission should be involved. I remember clearly a citywide mailing in which a slick color-folding brochure was received, but never a citywide meeting seeking input from the residents. To fully engage these public meetings and town hall gatherings also should be televised, as not all residents and stakeholders have internet and computers. City Club is not restricted to San Marino residents, nor is Rotary, nor is Chamber. Furthermore, I don't think our fire chief should be providing escort services to City Club members, despite the thoughtfulness of that. But if I were the fire chief, I would insist on compensation in my going to City Council, City Club meetings. Regarding caring about our seniors, the city completely failed in its design of the library for handicapped access. And so the city has lost my confidence, as well as what happened with the Rose Harbor. The EIR noted in the agenda packet appears to show that this project would ensure that the construction does not adversely impact any tribal cultural resources as defined in Public Resources Code, Section 21074. This project may have been approved by City Council, but not clearly approved when it comes to state law. There is much more than an EIR should have explored. Shame on the city to pull another demo-by-neglect campaign, like the developers do with our residential inventory, and shame on the proposers of this project for its egregious fiscal irresponsibility. Thank you.
Ms. Jagels, if you could get your last few sentences, thank you.
I'm complete, thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Okay. I'm not seeing any other raised hands on Zoom or any messages to speak.
Okay, and certainly.
Drew McNary, lived on Chasta Road for 54 years. And my two sons went through San Marino school systems. And I, I'm here today to, Hal Harrigan had some great comments, and I want to second what Hal Harrigan said. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any additional speakers or any written comments that have not yet?
I do not, I do not see any requests for additional speakers, either in the room or on Zoom. I do have three letters that I received prior to today's meeting, that I was able to distribute both to the council and to the public. One person did request, and I read their letter in full, the rest I will summarize. The first letter is from Ms. Marilyn Peck, and she says, she stated, "I read with great interest the full-page ad in the July 21 edition of the Tribune. I've questioned the expensive renovation of an old, not very attractive building like San Marino Center with no real parking of its own and cars overflowing into the neighborhoods. Why? You really can't make a silk purse out of a sow's ear, as the old saying goes. As a 45-year member of the San Marino Women's Club, I can tell everyone that it was built as a meeting place for a private club, nothing more. Later, we rented it out to the public for income. Number five in the ad brings up questions about Stoneman. This building is an historic asset, not a liability for the city. In working there nine years to restore the Stoneman mural, I realized what an architecturally beautiful and historic building is, appearing in national magazines. The people of San Marino held meetings a few years ago, were excited about using it in altered form, taking some of it down, building some new sections, retrofitting it, and using other parts of it as their community center with ample parking for all. We met with a planning firm, San Marino residents, city council members and city staff. Present staff, the city manager and city council members were not even in city positions in San Marino at the time or attended those meetings. What happened to all those plans and meetings? What happened to our wishes as citizens? Obviously, no one has taken the time to check the minutes of those meetings that were held for residents, and some may be still, some may still be unaware of them. I've often asked councilmembers at meetings and informally about Stoneman and never received an answer for them. I know there are contractors who would like to have that land to build on. I hope the people of San Marino will speak out and make sure it stays with us. It's part of our heritage and could be a more reasonable, less expensive choice for our center." I also, we also received a letter from Ms. Diane Lamb, and her letter generally is opposing the project. And finally, I received, we received a letter from Michelle Boyle, and her letter is to advocate for the project being placed on a temporary hold, so that further considerations could be looked at. And again, those were previously provided to both council and the public.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, can I have a question on that? I believe we have another nine emails that were sent to us in a position.
And would you like to review the process of how those were handled?
Certainly, so public comment should be submitted to the City Clerk, stated on the agenda. The address is cityclerk@cityofsanmarino.org. Unfortunately, these three letters are the only ones that I received. I do, I'm not automatically copied on emails that go to the whole City Council. So I did not receive any additional letters other than these. I do.
And thank you for that educational piece. Anything further, Councilmember?
No, thank you.
At this time, I'd like to bring the item back to council for discussion. I appreciate everyone who is here today. So let's begin with Councilmember Wong.
Okay, well, so it has been two years or more that we've been on this project, and, and we only had two town hall meetings. I believe that we should, you know, have more. And I received more than nine emails, I think it was sent to the City Council in a position of this project. And I think we almost made a mistake if we didn't have the EIR, because of, you know, without the EIR, we'd have, we would have changed the exterior design of this building. And when we purchased this, it was only 660,000 back in 2005, and now we're going to spend $8 million. I mean, anybody with, with, you know, common sense would spend that kind of money on his or her own project. I mean, I, I remember Councilmember Udi, when he campaigned, he said, "Run it like a business." So if we have money, I think we should wait. I mean, we're going to have a lot of reserves every year, so, well, what's a hurry? And the people have spoken, and I think we should lessen and maybe have more town hall meetings on what we want to do with the, the future of this building, what kind of investment return, you know, ROI and all that stuff. I think we need a better picture before we move on. I mean, you know, we're not in a hurry. I mean, if it took us four years to build a bathroom, it might take us 10 years to get this thing done. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Shepherd, Robby, your comment?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm also continue to oppose.
I'm also continue to oppose the project and do not think we should even consider the bids before us. We don't have three. The pre-qualification was not done properly. And we really haven't even embedded C A B D constructions qualifications. From what I could find online, they are not qualified to do this project, and they don't have historical renovation experience, as well as they're not from the area. And I don't think they've even done projects of this scale and scope, let alone how complicated it is in its present form. As I think everybody here knows, I oppose the form. It has many unnecessary additions, including things like moving a kitchen for no reason, making it smaller, adding patios and walls, tearing down walls between, in the libraries already. That whole hillside will be an issue. There are many, many things that are going to be extremely costly. And I believe as members of the public, our residents have said importantly, now is not the time to do this, both in terms of what is going on economically, whether we say a 20% cost or whether we think it will be higher. Everybody sitting in this room would be ignorant to think that it can even be built based upon the current bid. And it makes me very suspect that out of two bids, one came in one and a half million lower than the other, and we only have two. So this would be just based on the information before us in this packet. To act today would be wasteful and undoubtedly lead, as many have said who have experienced in the business, and we all know from projects going on in town, there will be change orders. Costs are going to get significantly higher. As soon as these walls are open, we've been told from the beginning, we don't know what's inside. We don't know if it will even be able to support a new roof of the kind of materials that we had. There has been no analysis of any of that. Those are all change orders, and I see this becoming similar to other projects nearby. For example, the gym, extremely costly. And our residents oppose it even at the present cost. We've gone far beyond the 4 million, which was the estimate that we all agreed to. And to do, approve double that today, knowing that it will again increase probably another 4 million minimally once we get going and prices rise in this terrible situation we have for construction costs, would be ignoring everything that's been said by the community members opposing from the start. And it would also be ignoring our fiduciary duty to them to spend their money wisely. When we have important historic resources such as Stoneman, we have infrastructure that has yet to be completed. We have a huge project pending in Lacy Park. We have a crumbling and inadequate city hall. And particularly, the police department has outgrown and their situation. So if we have the money, we should spend it on prioritizing projects that are needed in the community first. And I think that's why the residents elected us to begin with. And it is our responsibility to them to prioritize projects and spend their money wisely. I also have a problem with, I want to thank everybody that came today and as well as showed up in person, as well as the 20 or more people online. Clearly, there is a great deal of concern in our community that remains and point out to my fellow council members that nobody is speaking in support of this. As Councilmember Wong pointed out, there were more than nine emails sent to the entire council that aren't reflected in the record. All of those were opposed for many of the reasons stated by people here today, as well as many other reasons. And I think those all need to be part of the record because they do take into account many things that our community should be aware of. I also have a problem in the big picture that overall this has doubled in costs from the time we all began and we all agreed on it. When we were told by staff and by whatever professionals were out there that we did pay for, that this would be $4 million or less. And the fact that it is taken so much time to conduct the proper public comment that should have been done. And COVID has happened in between with those supply chains should not affect our ultimate decision. There is no way that those things that have caused the cost increases means we should hurry now. As a matter of fact, I would think what my grandparents used to say, you shouldn't throw good money after bad. So we have spent money on this so far to date. And I think it should be on hold until the economic crisis, the building materials crisis, the construction industry. Everything calms down, and we have a greater sense. Additionally, in the meantime, when we do that, we can do a business plan. We can do an ROI. We can figure out what the space should look like interior and how we would maintain it, which is money that we know is coming, whatever we do here, as well as if the city decides and our community decides how we could rent it out or what will be our return on investment. None of those things have been done, and I could not support this. And I believe our community does not support this. And I feel that it's incumbent upon us to act on behalf of our community's interests. So my conclusion is that we cannot do this at this time. And I respect that the work that our task force or the committee did, as well as our council representatives. But it is not ready for proceeding. And it would be a mistake to do so and a waste of our residents' money.
Thank you. Councilmember Yudi?
Yeah. I want to thank Councilmember Wong for reminding me to run it like a business because running a business is taking care of your physical assets and being prudent with your financial investments. One of the reasons I ran was that I was told if our streets were in good conditions, it would only cost 400 or $800,000 a year to keep them in good condition. And prior councils did not address the maintenance CapEx issues. And the city then is facing, you know, 45 million over 10 years to get the streets back in good condition. So we also have the responsibility with some of our physical assets to take care of them. And I think the city deserves to have a good community center. And if it's $6 million to do the necessary deferred maintenance, the difference between six and eight and a half to me is two and a half, which is really, you know, not the conversation. If we do not do anything, this building essentially becomes right. There would be, you know, a fence around it. We'd probably turn it over to the spiders and the termites. So I think, I think we owe it to the city to take care of our assets. Some of the things that community members have brought up, I think the task force did in their diligence address, and they went deep into the weeds on it. So you might not have participated in the conversations, but they did look hard at the utilization. And that's why a lot of the changes were recommended and were incorporated into that final design. And I also think running it like a business, if we have $45 million in the bank today, making 1% interest, it's not responsible not to reinvest that back into our physical assets.
Anything further?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Tom?
Thank you, Mayor Jacobowski. First of all, I would like to address the comment with respect to the historical value of this building. I agree. I've agreed since the beginning. However, as a result of a threat by people or persons that opposed the center to begin with, we thought diligently, speaking, the best thing to do was to do the EIR that they required. The EIR unfortunately came up with the decision that this was a historical building. I agree, there's nothing architecturally great about it. We could have put a plaque up honoring the women's club and the importance it has had in our community and California in general. But that's not what happened. As a result, to answer some of the questions with respect to the increase in costs raised by both council members who opposed the project and members of the community, this EIR required additional costs that were not anticipated when we, at least in my opinion, rightfully believed this was not a historical building. But in a city like San Marino, when we have a historical building, our desires are to find a way to maintain it, not allow it to be torn down. Do that for members who want to do something in the house. So I agree with that conclusion that that ship has sailed because the EIR came back. With respect to the argument, the five members of the council, an agreement, I invite Councilmember Shepard Rami and Councilmember Wong to join the majority. There's no law that requires it. Decisions are made all the time in Congress by one vote out of 100 to spend billions of dollars. I wish that it could be all five members, but up to now, there's been a majority of three, and that's what the law requires. I have been involved in this project since when we started talking about Stoneman, as I mentioned earlier. In looking at the best use of our assets, the best use of the assets, this place cannot be sold. There's no market for it, right? It's between a school and a library. Nobody's going to come in and buy this. We can look at this research or anything else. This building does not have a value other than to the city. And I agree that the best use of this is as a community center, consolidate recreation in here, find what to do with Stoneman. Because we went through that six years ago in the termination by probably some of the same people that opposed it, is we shouldn't spend the money. And we didn't. And one of the reasons was, is a lot of people said a community center should be in the middle of town. Well, this is closer to the middle of town than the community center. It will, it will be the best use as a community center. I realize the $8 million is a lot of money to spend. I do. But if we don't make a decision today, that's going to become $10 million when we get around doing the same things over and over again. Because as Mr. Lowe pointed out, and I'm not just looking at CPI. I looked at the construction cost index to determine whether or not the argument made in that ad in the paper, which, by the way, was a political ad. And a lot of people opposed it despite the statements in there relied on that and came to us and said, "It's going to cost us $10 million. It's going to cost us, only 30% of the people are going to use it." There was no basis in fact for that. They relied on it. And, you know, to me, that's a fruit of the poisonous tree. If they're relying on bad information, then anything they say from that information cannot be reliable. But to get back to the, to the argument with respect to the use of Stoneman in this place, yeah, 8.3 is a lot of money. I get that. But I believe that the benefit to the community is substantial. We talk about business plans. You talk about a cost benefit analysis. When you look at a cost benefit analysis for a government civic building or for a government program, what the measurement of the benefit is not only financial, and there will be financial returns on this, but it's also the substantive benefit. Having a community center where seniors can come and be safe and do their chair yoga and play bridge and do their line dancing. A benefit for the children to come to a place that is safe and in the middle of the town and near their schools, at least two of them, to be in a protected area, to be able to have a place for an emergency resource, if that happens, a safe place. We have no place in town like that in this community center. And that is a subjective benefit. It can't be measured by some financial document. People will disagree with it. But it's my belief that the benefit to the community for all the potential uses, both monetary and non-monetary, outweigh doing nothing. So today, I support the accepting the bid. And this, this, not just two-year journey, but this 15-year journey, 17-year journey, come to an end and we move forward. And, you know, I don't know what's going to happen with change orders. I mean, that happens, I get that. And that's why in here, we have part of a, we have a 10% contingency. And I understand that. But the cost is not going to go down if we wait another year. It's going to cost us more. The construction cost index has only gone down in one year. It was only in the last 20, and it was only by 1%. And that's a risk that I'm not willing to take. And I believe we've done our due diligence. I believe we've properly relied on experts. I believe that despite the people that oppose it today, there is a substantial number of community members that support this project. And I say it's time for San Marino to step up and do what's right and provide a community center that we can be proud of and not an empty building that will go unused, to become deteriorated, be a sore in the middle of honey. Thank you.
Thank you. Much of what I'd like to say has been eloquently said. I will keep my comments to a minimum. I talked with city manager Marlowe and asked her how many meetings over the last two years have been available to the public where matters of the San Marino have, center have been discussed? And she said certainly more than 10. And by the way, when Michael Throne was here, he did lead a walk-through for residents who wanted to view this, who wanted to give input. And those who wanted to be part of that came. But I'm going to tell you what hurts me. I and my four colleagues have been giving you the last five years joyfully, most of the time, of our lives to do the work of the city. I often check with the city clerk at the end of the meeting. Unless there is an issue of huge importance, like when we wanted to get a permanent site for Grad Night. Do you know how many people, citizens, we average attending our city council meetings? We collectively own the city. Five. Do you know how much that hurts? That the community only cares when we come down to final decision-making? Where are you through processes earlier on when we're starting to address these issues? When we made the decision to go forward and appointed those members to the task force, you don't realize how many hours they have put into this. As they have shared with you, they have, each have different reasons for being involved. This isn't just the five of us. As I said earlier, we were adamant that this becomes something that is owned by the community. As far as the ad, I've noticed the names of people both attached to it and who separately emailed us. I don't even, and we're being told that there won't be really any use for this. I haven't even seen you folks regularly over the last few years, even when we've had outdoor or safe meetings being part of it. And the question of the legacy of two of us who will be leaving, do you know how thrilled I would be to come back in a few years and to be able to come here? Because this is a social community. We love one another. We'd love being together. To listen to a lecture in this room from our right-in-town Huntington Library folks, to have someone from Caltech come over, our San Marino Historical Society. We enjoy food. We can't drink at city events, but we can certainly come here and have a meal and enjoy a presentation. We can have our departments really shine as we come together for the residents. The uses are limitless. And part of that is evidenced in the fact that today, over at the Crowell Public Library, have you been in the bathroom recently? That is the one place where we can come together as a city. It's getting ratty, as Dr. Marlowe mentioned. We there too have audiovisual issues. Um, we there too have audio visual issues. Um, we can't hold all the people we'd like to have there. We're limited in how and where we can get together. Where where were you with bringing us other options of where we can come together as a city? I have been waiting and just a few of the notes that I've kept over the years are E I R, which we've read. Um, the meetings I took notes online. I wasn't hearing from anybody an alternative except to maybe spend quite a few million more and go over to Stoneman. So it's great to show up. I do respect you for voicing opinions, but where have you been through this whole process? Your task force and your council members have met endless hours on this project. And I feel because of the research we put into it, we are ready to move forward. Um, I think that um. Even if we don't get the financial return some folks may be looking for. Our return comes in human lives. The residents get to use this place. Uh, when councilmember Udi and I were the first liaisons to the Recreation Commission in two thousand eighteen, we had a meeting. And we asked citizens to come and tell us how would they like to see the Recreation Department. Built, figured, re repurposed. And parent after parent said to us, if you want to give us um early age care for our children, fine. But please, our middle to high school age kids, they have their sports, they have their academics, they have their scouting, they have their tutoring. The last thing we need from you is more programs. Do something for us when we have earned our free time after we have done our job with our children. And I see that when I don't know how many of you gather when they have the outdoor events at the old mill or when we are here for City Club. What I observe is people not ready to leave. We like being with one another. We talk and we talk. This is our chance to come together as a community, and that is the special and unique feature of San Marino. And that is why many of us moved here. Uh, I have nothing further to say. Do I have a motion for a vote?
I move to one, award a construction agreement to C A B D Construction Inc. For the San Marino Center renovation project number twenty dash one thousand in the amount of five million eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Two, award a professional services agreement, the amount not to exceed three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to Griffith Structures for Professional Construction Management Services. Three, approve a Native American Monitoring Services Agreement with Keys Nation Resources Management. In the amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars. Four, authorize parks and public work directors to approve contract change orders and other contingencies in a cumulative amount not to exceed six hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. And five, approve one million six hundred and twenty three thousand six hundred and thirteen dollars to account number three ninety four dash forty dash four six zero zero dash one thousand San Marino Center renovation from the capital reserves balance.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please. Councilmember Wong?
No.
Councilmember Shepard Rami?
No.
Councilmember Udi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Talt?
Yes.
Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you again for everyone's participation. We would love to see you more in the future. That is a sincere statement. We are a community and we work together. Um, I'd like to call a ten minute recess, please. Thank you. I'd like to call a 10-minute recess, please. Thank you. Madam Mayor? Madam Mayor? Alrighty. All right, we're moving on to the consent calendar.
Madam Mayor, if I might interject over here. Sorry. We, as you know, have Recreation Commission appointments on our agenda for today and those interviews were conducted this week and so the motion that will fill out item number two on your consent calendar is I move to appoint Cory Solon and Roland Tam as regular members-
Excuse me, one moment, please. Excuse me. May we ask those still in the building to please keep their conversations to a whisper? Thank you.
All right, sorry about that. I move to appoint Cory Solon and Roland Tam as regular members to the Recreation Commission to serve terms ending May 31, 2024, and Edward Yen, Leslie Tsai, and Stanley Wu as regular members to the Recreation Commission to serve terms ending May 31, 2026. So if you approve the consent calendar, that will be the motion that you're approving for item number two.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Perhaps we might need to close. Thank you so much. At this point, do any council members wish to pull any items from consent calendar? As a reminder, council members may vote no on a specific consent calendar item without pulling the item for discussion. Councilmember Shepherd-Romney, anything you'd like to pull?
Yes, items two and three.
Two and three and Councilmember Huang?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Udi?
Nothing, thank you.
Vice Mayor Tom?
Nothing.
And I have nothing. Do I have a motion to approve items four through seven? Or yes, an item four through seven?
Sure.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Do we require discussion on those? No?
Roll call.
Roll call, please. Thank you.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd-Romney?
Yes.
Councilmember Udi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Talt?
Yes.
Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, item number two, Councilmember Shepherd-Romney.
I pulled it because I think we do have amended to say what City Manager instructed us, which is a change from what I see here. Is that correct?
What you have in item number two is some blanks for names and what I gave you was filling in those blanks so you can just approve the item if you're comfortable with it.
Okay, and the second, I know that we now have a vacancy and I was reminded even today from a person who spoke at the first agenda item. We have a vacancy on Design Review Commission and I believe Vice Mayor Talt and I have discussed the replacement of, you know, elevating one of our existing and long-serving alternates to into that position. And so I wanted to know because they are meeting, DRC specifically is meeting. And so how soon or how do we go about, is there a process? And do we also get it on the agenda or is it something that appointment can be made by voice, for example, at this time?
It's not agendized for today, so you can't take that action today, but it will be agendized at your September meeting, which is the next available meeting. My understanding from the two liaisons is that you'd like to elevate a particular one of the alternates. And so the good news is that insofar as DRC meets prior to then, he is already eligible to participate because he is an alternate and can just serve in that capacity until you formally appoint him in September.
All right. So thank you. So if they do meet, he can act in that way again, a direction of, I guess, their chair at the time. Thank you.
Okay. I have a motion to pass items number two and three.
Oh, that was only related to two. I have questions regarding three, so.
Oh, but you had pulled both, so we-
We've only addressed item two.
Okay. Then may I have a motion?
I can't make a motion because the names went so fast, so.
Oh, I'd be delighted to repeat it again. All right. It is, I move to appoint Cory Solon, that's C-O-R-I, and Roland Tam as regular members to the Recreation Commission to serve terms ending May 31, 2024, and Edward Yen, Leslie Tsai, and Stanley Wu as regular members to the Recreation Commission to serve terms ending May 31, 2026. Because we're re-establishing the commission, we're appointing everybody. So two of the members get appointed to a two-year term, three get appointed to a four-year term, so we're able to continue our staggered appointment process.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mayor, just one moment before we go to the motion. An opportunity for public comment. We do still have some folks on Zoom.
Great. May we please offer that?
Let me see if there's any raised hands on Zoom. There are none. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Sure.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd-Romney?
Yes.
Councilmember Udi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Talt?
Yes.
Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Do we have any written communication?
We still need to discuss item three that Councilmember Shepherd-Romney asked to discuss.
My apologies.
Sorry.
Concerning item number three, the reason why I wanted to bring it to the attention of my co-members of council is not that I oppose this particular request. I am concerned overall when you consider now, for example, we've approved the Gooden Center, I believe another closure as well as the San Marino car class-
Motor Classic.
Motor Classic, sorry. I knew there was a word. I couldn't get their car, motor. Okay, Motor Classic. I don't know if we want to put a cap on the number of weekend Saturdays in the course of a year that groups can come to us to get exclusive use of the park because I know that it is heavily used by residents and the public alike and I'm worried that so far we've never really questioned any or decided against any outside use. And we don't really have a cap, for example, that I believe other parks or other facilities might in surrounding communities. They have set aside that a certain number of days or weekends a year could be doing that. And so as a matter of discussion for us, whether we do want to look toward doing something like that or do we want to keep proceeding on a case-by-case basis?
Can I ask you a question? Did you see on Saturdays? Because these events are on Thursdays.
Okay. Well, thank you. I did not, is exactly what I was going to look up is go look at it and scroll the calendar.
I didn't look at the calendar.
Thank you. So I was going to do that, but you understand my point. I mean, I'm not worried about these requests and I absolutely think the park should be there. I was a cross-country runner. It's great to have a meet here and use the park. But I just meant, do we want to set some guidelines or is this something we need to think about in the future for exclusive use?
Perhaps this is something you might want to invite your new Recreation Commission to look at.
Oh, great.
Great idea.
Sure, that would be nice to get their recommendation non-binding.
Absolutely.
But, and bring that back to us as to whether it's done and how. And also from our Recreation Director's standpoint, I know, you know, they have certain plans and the community uses too. So I just see this as becoming a maybe more of an issue in the future and I'd like to see us have a plan and a policy in place. So thank you.
Is that acceptable to council to move it to Recreation?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Anything further on that item?
Not for me. Okay.
Motion, please.
Mayor, just one more opportunity for public comment. Just get one more senior from Zoom raises their hand. No request for comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
I move to authorize temporary closure of Lacy Park on September 22, 2022, and November 3, 2022, and charge San Marino High School $170 for the Lacy Park permit fees to host the Rio Honda League cross-country meets.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd-Romney?
Yes.
Councilmember Udi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Talt?
Yes.
Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. At this point, are there any written communications or public writings for distribution? Seeing none, I just would like to give a very brief comment. I attended the LA County Senate Nation District meeting this week and as we know, we're having spare- Respect, please.
I just thought of a funny joke.
It is my joy as a council member attending this group. And as we all know, we have severe water shortages going on and I really would like for council to consider even maybe not in this iteration, but perhaps at the beginning of the year, that we do have a presentation of what is going forward in terms of recycling water. As we are receiving our utility bills, I received my electric bill today and it was more than double of what it was one year ago and I am suspecting we will be seeing more of the same with water. So I would really encourage council that we stay on top of these issues and be actively involved. Anyone have any other communications? No. At this point, public comment. Is there anyone wishing to speak at this time?
Let me give just a moment, see if there's any raised hands. No, no request for comment.
Okay, thank you. Next, I would like to ask about future agenda items. Is there any member who would like to have an item for future agenda?
No, but I have a comment I would like to make.
Please.
I wanted to ask if the fellow council members would. There are two people who I would like to recognize and it has to do with agenda item four. We just approved that as a consent item, but I think that attention should be drawn to it because of the law that is going to protect children and our approval. This was a case or a situation that happened here in the San Marino area. Our San Marino Police Department was involved with a call to the mother, Anna Estvez, reporting her son missing. So I would like to adjourn our meeting in honor of her efforts to get this law passed and for the passing of that child whose life was taken by the father that prompted that action by our state legislature for greater protection and so, and following up the cadence law. And that was just a comment I wanted to make and not let it go unremarked upon.
And I thank you for that and actually I was planning on pulling that item for a similar reason. First, thank you to Chief Incontro for bringing this to the agenda. And the bonus piece to this legislation is that there will be a requirement for all judges to go through 20 hours of training every few years. You may or may not know, there were three cases in the last year or so where multiple children were killed by their parents after a judge had denied a restraining order. So the need for ongoing training and unfortunately for the judges to see the effects of some of their decisions is a necessary part of this law. So thank you, council member. I appreciate that. And with that, is there anyone here who would like to also close in honor of the memory of those-
I would like to recognize Eldon Swanson, who passed away last week for his years as a resident and his love and passion and the time he put into the library.
Thank you. Thank you. That's very-
And I would like to close for Lucille, in honor of Lucille Norberg, a longtime resident, very involved, in fact, in the women's club at one point, as well as Rotary. She was a very, very special woman and made it to 98, but she passed away last Friday, I think it was. And she's very special and very involved in the San Marino Community Church as well.
Thank you. And I know that a memorial service will be planned in the future. If you could keep us posted on when that-
It's planned on September 22, I believe.
And if you could get the details timed.
I will, yeah.
Many people in the community would love to honor her memory and she certainly was inspirational. And Mr. Swanson had also been responsible for the radio frequency program that we have in the library and he was quite passionate about that, so we appreciate it. Councilmember Huang, were you going to say something else?
No, I was going to, I was going to mention Lucille.
And we, I presume we are all in concurrence with those votes. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to move to closed session. Thank you. Thank you each.